You know, one other thing that I'm interested in all of the applications going forward, plain board, and I don't understand this because I've never been in an applicant. But what they do is they, a group will come in, they want to maximize the number of units. So they'll say, we have this much water, and they'll build a whole plan for that amount of water, and then do the water testing later on. I mean, gee, that was a waste because we don't have that many, that much water. And I've seen that over and over and over again. I don't know how much that costs, I don't know how much that delays, but it, but I've seen that, and you know, and so, I mean, it is, because I can understand why an applicant would want to maximize the number of units to continue to turn on their investment. So, but anyway, we're going to look at this and talk about this. It is a, much more of a dynamic problem than, we can probably discuss a couple, we may actually actually come in one on one and tell us what our thoughts are, you know, because we really want to get to the bottom of this thing.
One last thing, if I may say, you know, that would certainly be our pleasure if you asked us, then we'd contribute in any way we could.
Right.
You know, it's become serious for everybody, regardless of everyone's political feelings.
Right.
The country needs to do better than it's doing, and until such, and manufacturing's largely out of this country, we don't have that, manufacturing's gone. Today, the construction and development industry is, is a large part of the manufacturing in this country, and it's not just a recession, it's gone. So few people that own the business are in, whether it's heating and cooling, whatever it is, it's a miracle we're still around. And it does matter to those people who aren't in the development business. When these areas start to contract, when nobody moves back with their kids and everything else, we've all got problems. So, I appreciate the fact that, you know, there's more of a feeling of working together because, to a certain extent, we are all in this together.
Well, I think New York State too, after this board, we go back about four, maybe five months ago, there was a property, they wanted to go to one and a half million square foot industrial park kind of thing, looked at. We did not get the nod, it would create 12 per job to our community. And the community that was picked was Berkeley County, West Virginia, that's where my mug of law is. I went down there three or four weeks ago, I'm reading the paper, and here is the building that's well under construction, they're taking applications for jobs, but what is going to be finished? And yet, the New York seeker process takes a year, basically. I mean, that's work at full speed ahead of them. So it shows that even the, the state of New York, we need to really analyze what it is that's important to us, and do work accordingly. And, but they had this, this Congresswoman there having her photograph taken, photo op, where they're doing all this stuff in the Martinsburg Journal. And I'm like, well, you know, that couldn't bet us. There are a lot of reasons why it didn't happen. I don't know what, I mean, I can share with you right in front some of the things we'll talk about tonight in our budgets, workers' compensation in the state of New York for manufacturers just precludes people ever wanting to come to New York to work. I mean, it just does. And, and, and I have firsthand experience in that managing businesses here, before I kept working for the town of Ocean.
Doug, it's almost like when a democracy becomes as mature as a democracy in this country, or in New York State, you just can't get anything done anymore. I had dinner on Saturday night with a guy who just came back from his 70th second trip to China in the last 10 years, has businesses in China, and it was fascinating, and without taking too much of your evening, I'll tell you, I asked him, I said, what would be the thing that I wouldn't know as a typical person the most, and he shared with me about the development process, but he said the bottom line is that there, there, it's not that there's no regulation, but it's, it's an entirely different world, and he's been, and that, I'd say it's not just between West Virginia and New York anymore, it's, it's part of the reason why, you know, the country's struggling.
Right. Okay, so we will put this, the easements and the transfer of property, maybe early Thursday, this week, if not then, in our next, uh...
Okay.
Thank you for coming in. And thank you for your candor.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Now, we have several soucheers, that issue one way is through these.
Yeah, I have a problem. Matt, you have Eastgate.
I do.
The one that we have tonight to resolve, resolution-wise, is Eastgate Corbin Park. Now, when I say tonight, I mean, we have what I call the consent judgment, as you fellows know. But the procedure is, once we settle these things, if and when we can, the petitioner's attorney prepares all the legal documents with the judge. I've brought up the problems with some of the applicants in the past by approving the resolution settlement before the consent judgment is received. So, vis a vis your list, Eastgate, we have a consent judgment. Matroc and Excelsior, we've settled them, but we don't have the consent judgment materials yet. Now, we can resolution them if you so desire.
No, we don't.
I would recommend you wait. But they, they are settled, they are settled, both Matroc and Excelsior.
We have time.
Consent judgments, and LeBlanc is, proposals have been made, we don't have confirmation on that.
All right.
So that is why, so that's why you're only doing one tonight. Technically, you could do three if you wanted to, but again, see, these consent judgments problematic in the sense that you always have the which is, interests included, Sunday they want dispersments, like, no, no, no. The deal is, the resolution, no dispersments, no interest, no nothing, give me the documents and we'll process it.
I think we'll have biser for them.
It's possible, there's no way of knowing with these attorneys, you know.
If they're ready, fine, we'll do it in the next quarter session.
I, I, my end candid guest today is Monday, Helen, they wouldn't even have it be in the mail by Thursday.
Okay.
That's my feeling, because we were working with them on Friday.
Then I won't put them on the...
Well, you, you, I have no problem putting them on, sometimes information speaking keeps you abreast, also the public. But I just don't, I can't.
I just don't want them to fall off.
Oh, no, 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 trust me, they will, because, I mean, as you folks, we get done by the calendar calls all the time, we don't get these results. Because judges want them off the calendar as much as you folks do.
Well, why don't you go to Eastgate and first have a look?
Okay, I have a problem. Eastgate, as you know, is the office, commercial complex, out on 17A, next to Sureshi, and it's on both sides of the road. And basically, we're settling eight years, goes back to 2003, two parcels, and the combined resolution of which result in refunds as follows. For those, again, eight years on two parcels, so one way of thinking about it, 16 search or error. The town's refund is going to be $6,874. The school district's refund is $101,779. The village's refund is $38,266. Fire district, $7,304. And the county, $19,063. This has been approved by the school board, because they intervened in the case, and as you know, we were looking at hardcore expenses for appraisals and whatnot in excess of $15,000, just to prepare this case for trial, they won't do the trial. So what you're looking at is a substantial reduction in exposure to the town, with, again, the school district approving and agreeing with the decision.
That's about $850 a year, for eight years.
I, okay, for you, yeah.
Being settled a tax search area of this magnitude, it's, it's...
Correct.
That is such a win-win.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yes.
I mean, it's...
And as a board, though, philosophically, and I know Doug and the rest of the board felt this way too, you've got to move these off the calendar. I mean, if you can imagine this, the oldest year is 2003.
Yeah.
And, and he's been around for a long time, and that's what hurts because they accumulate. And we're, we're much more aggressive with them now, getting them off the calendar, but this is one of your old hangers-on, and this is one of the final ones.
For the boards...
If not the final one, or this magnitude, you know, number of years.
Oh, yeah, for the boards' information, we run all, we meet every week, and all of these, and so we do all the numbers and, and so...
Just to give you an idea, the, I don't expect you to be attorneys necessarily, just the filing fees and whatnot, give or take, every time you put it on the calendar, it's around $250 to $300 for the petitioner. Now, those are not, is not recoverable. These are the index numbers, just look at, almost, every one of those represents one of those charges, much like Mr. Walker's, yeah. It's, it can be very cumbersome, and it's burdensome, certainly, but it is what it is, that's the system.
Yeah.
And this one, if you remember, rivaltury in terms of the assumed leading years, not in terms of value or exposure. And this is one of the last, if I'm not mistaken, this is the last, the last one of this nature.
Yeah, oh, Gotion Corp., mine wall.
Yeah, right.
Oh, yeah, we had a couple.
Right, but those are combined, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
No, they don't go back eight, but we got six parcels.
Much as long.
Yeah, right. That, that's a problem, and you won't have that problem going forward, because you do right now.
Well, the fact is, this, we're settling Eastgate, Matroc's, and Excelsior, well, those three, they're all done, we're unsettled of them.
Right.
What, you're saying in excess of 75% were completed under search years.
Yeah, well, you're, you're, in fact, I, I would expect, if we can get Gotion Corp., that's the mine wall problem.
Right.
If we can get that one resolved, within reason, you'll almost have a clean slate going into the rebound.
Right.
But, yeah, but it's not tense, and we're concerned about some of them, whether they're our settlement.
Well, this board is, we get the bullet.
Right.
And we face these things head-on, and have found whatever the solution was, but at least we have, we've gotten caught, that was said in Washington.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, they've been hanging around for six, eight years, we have just done it.
And what fascinates me, if I don't, Phil and Doug, they'll work on these things, we meet every week on these.
Yeah.
And what fascinates me, in a normative, as someone's saying, comment, when you get into these things, the arithmetic is not that difficult. The valuation is certainly subjective, okay, it always is, but if you follow, if, if more time had been spent, years passed, I'm not just criticizing anybody, I just don't know why some of these didn't come.
Because it's not palatable, and it's not...
Maybe, maybe...
Well, let me, let me give you my take on one, is that years and years ago, first of all, this is a kind of self-shot of board, well, let's not do it, let them check the money back in.
Yeah.
And, and so, you have that. I think that the applicants, I'm sorry, the petitioner themselves, well, we'll hold off because every day this goes by, if we do, we're going to get interest.
At 9%.
At 9%, so where are you going to find, you know?
And nobody can get money.
No. And then the third thing is, we had, we had an attorney that I think, that we had him in here a couple of times, and I think that it was insurance, you know, everybody's making money, but we're going nowhere fast.
Yeah, it's possible.
And it's like, we're still talking to these professionals.
You're telling me the part of the search and the purpose is that it's not, not...
Well, you know what it is, it's, it's easier to just not do it, let it go for another year, you know? You don't have to worry about the tax base, you don't have to worry about paying the search rate, you don't have to face this dragon, but the problem is, in business, it doesn't get any better. It all, it gets worse.
And it don't go...
And it doesn't go away, you defer it to the next person. Well, we are the next person, we're not going to defer it to any other future voice, we're just going to handle it.
And as you, I can work somewhere too, from these mills now, who solicit these, okay?
Oh, yeah.
They usually, the attorneys too, they usually work on what they call a contingency fee basis, so obviously, the more accumulated years, the higher the fee, and the easier it may be to resolve without trial, and, just from our, people aren't aware of this, but the legal rate of interest in New York right now on search or errorized judgments, et cetera, is 9%. Now, no, like, it's 9%, any, I mean, in the real world, unless it's state law, it's right in the present.
It's been 9% for years and years and years.
Yes, it has.
And therefore, it should be totally adjusted.
It should be.
For this economy, but...
I know, yeah.
Just loads of trials, is what it should be.
But that's why, but this is why these things have been going on, and there's no push by anybody to fix them.
All right. So, you, you do have a resolution in front of you, the only thing you do not have is the, what I call the consent judgments I referred to before, that's the attachment wherein it's broken down all of the 16 revisions, which are set forth in the consent.
But you have that.
I have that, we've confirmed it, it's accurate based upon...
Would someone like to make a motion regarding...
No, excuse me.
Go, go.
Your second, any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to...
I, I said, I'm...
I just did a quick math, so for all the entities, it's roughly $173,000, that's going back to the petitioner.
Uh, yeah.
So, the thing that I still don't know, how much of that $173,000 is interest that's going back?
Zero.
Oh, I thought you said, I thought you said 9%.
We negotiated, no interest.
Well, that's what I thought, that's what I thought, but then when you said before about interest, and is interest in this, then I was confused, is there interest in none?
No, there's no interest in it, interest will be on top of it, it's not resolved within 60 days.
I got you.
Okay. Or subsequent to judgment, now, that's the other thing too, when you take a case to judgment, or to trial, sorry, whatever, if you lose, from the entry of judgment, interest runs, and they can always waive it, they can settle it and not take it, but it's running. Whereas, when you settle a tax, you usually have a 60-day window. We have a 60-day grace period for everybody to comply, and no interest thereafter, if you start to...
That's a good question, George.
We try to settle them, we look at how much the appraisals will cost, what the, what the effect is, and you know what, it's a gate, it's just economic, it's just dollars.
You know, I know some of your personnel use this term for, it's like economic blackmail, if you think about it. So, you've all been involved with attorneys through your life, where they're like, what do you mean that so-and-so's suing me for $5,000? The point is, it's going to cost you X number of dollars to resolve that case, so in turn, your attorney's like, look, you don't owe it, you're not liable for it, but unless you want to have a period of victory, you're going to be paying X dollars, it's economic blackmail, you might as well kick it in, but, I mean, it's just, that's the system, it's not fair. But, and that's where a lot of these people leave and file, and we, we are discovering a lot of them, but a lot of people will file knowing full well that the town is going to have to spend $3,000 to $8,000 for appraisal, for, et cetera, let alone returns. It gets to be a vicious circle, and it becomes a question of, you know, the validity and the accuracy of your appraisal, that's why we're doing a rebound, as you all know, election.
And Madam Kirk, can we have a roll call, Buck, please?
Senator Roger Greenfield.
Aye.
Senator Rick Feller.
Aye.
Senator Lyons.
Aye.
Senator Catherine Hattler.
Aye.
Senator McLeod.
Aye.
Senator Carey.
Just a, just clarifications to the board, as we're, and these consents are set up from my signature, and that of Mr. Sharpe's, the school board attorney, considering being, and that's what the resolution's oversight, just so that you're aware. Sometimes, depending on the petitioner doing it, how they do it, supervisor and/or assessor and/or counsel will sign.
Well, that counsel doesn't sign everything, I mean, when I say...
Correct, correct, the schools, correct.
So, we settled this, the school paid their returns, and we...
Yeah, it's interesting, you know, I often, it's interesting, I, I don't, yeah, it's interesting, we say that.
It costs us money as taxpayers.
Absolutely, yeah, because it varies, if we settle, let's say they, they just like, they don't like it, like, guess what, you know, you've got every choice. I, I think, I, I don't know, I'm not going to speculate on their motives, it is what it is.
Okay, very good, well, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, the next item is for information only, we continue to work on developing the 2012 budget. We've had many visits, I'm sorry, many, many sessions between Phil and myself, and Bill, Standish, the budget officer, trying to get better readout on revenue, expenses, et cetera. Now, one of the things that Phil and I are going to do is go to Albany on Wednesday, to the New York Department of State, we want to look at, we want to talk to them, they've got experience in basically consolidating, whatever, you know, and we want to figure out what, if there are some options that we can use, do, the, we're also going to a class or a seminar on the tax cap, it's up at New Falls on the 30th of October, and Phil and myself, Phil are going to that, to really understand what is an exception, what's not an exception, et cetera, okay? And in addition to that, we held this week, an hour-long meeting with the, you know, the Comp Alliance, and we had George, Phil, myself, and we talked about the rates and the tail claims, et cetera, et cetera. And I think it's interesting to note, we've had improved performance in our workman's comp interest, improved performance, and 100% is the, is the standard, so, in the actuarial tables and whatnot, they'll go to a certain point, you pay 100% of that if you're just average. We're better than average, so we're down at 88%, so we get a 12% break on our costs, okay? And we talked to the Comp Alliance people, they said, gee, the best you could probably do is in the, maybe 78% or somewhere down in the 70s, but no one's better than that. But there are many who pay 110% or whatever it might be, on the other side of the ledger, okay? With that, our workman's compensation costs have gone up 6.6%. And, and pursuant of our conversation with the applicant on heritage states, some of the things we're wrestling with is a 14.2% increase in medical insurance, 14.2%, okay? 6.6 workman's comp. We currently have a 3.5% contract with the police for next year, corresponding benefit costs associated with that. We have a 4.2% increase in the contribution to the pension retirement system. And so you take all these, and you say, well, how are we going to be at 2%? Or CPI, whichever is lower. Well, we went and spent hours this morning on this, and it's not a pretty picture. It is an ugly picture, and, and that's why we've got to look at everything beyond just clipping and sniffing. Do we consolidate? Do we, whatever, you know? And so, anyway, we'll learn as much as we can and come back to the board and say, okay, here are all the options. But the, it is a very, very, and we're in good financial position, because our debt costs have been going down, and so, therefore, our debt payments have been going down. If, if, if debt payments were going up, I can't imagine how anybody would be at 2% without pulling their taxes together.
endorsing party.
Right, yeah. But this is, this is a very, very, now, we figured out how to get to 2% this morning, you know?
There'd be blood running in the street.
And, and we looked at that and said, wow, this is something.
It's ugly off.
It is ugly.
It's just ugly.
So, well, anyway, so, we've got much, much more work to do.
We have letters.
But, no, I don't like the way they're...
We don't either.
We don't have no control over work, it was gone, we have no control over hospitalization or, or pensions and insurances, and these are all going up double digits, and then we have to have a 2%, which means we're going to take away those services.
What I, what I find to be most interesting is, all of these communities, the villages and the towns, have to conform to the 2%.
In the next.
But, the people who pass this legislation don't, namely, the state. Now, how can we figure that out? I mean, it's just, it picks, I mean, I know there's an agenda, I know, you know, behind the scenes, and all that kind of stuff like that, but it just doesn't make sense. The other comment I wanted to make, which we're working on, and great towns are actually, is at this meeting, the workman's comp meeting, and the one thing that we can work on, and are going to work on, and hopefully drive down the premium in workman's comp, is payroll. I think, and we all thought, that the information that they got was dated information.
Yes.
Like, for, just for instance, we no longer have joint rec, so all that money that transferred as far as the pay and stuff like that, that's all off of our books now, that's over at the village. And we had a number of people who were not replaced, so we think that the payroll numbers that they used to arrive at this figure is not correct, and I guess Bill is going to work on that.
Well, that, that's not, because they're using 2,008 figures.
Yeah. So, we're optimistic, I guess, I would say, not that it's...
Maybe if we change carriers, I don't know.
Yeah, that we know, we might be able to drive down costs some.
Well, that's why we have insurance, the commissioner of insurance, it is a very complex deal, whether it be liability insurance, compensation insurance, and medical insurance, or whatever, insurance is a big part of our budget.
Yeah.
And I'm glad George is in, because this year, 2011, are we really reduced our workman's comp costs significantly.
Yeah, we've done a...
The last two or three years.
Great job in all of these areas, so containing costs and reducing debt service. I can't imagine some of these other municipalities that are heavily, heavy in debt, they're going to run out of money 60 days after their budget's passed. I don't know what they're going to do, really, I mean, we, we...
You have to contact, I mean, I...
We'll find out, maybe, Wednesday morning, when we go up to, to Albany, what's going on, but we're going, we're not going to, we're going.
Okay, but anyway, and, and by the way, I appreciate Phil and George's input into this thing, because we went through all these meetings and things, and we'll continue. And by the way, we're probably two or three weeks ahead of most of the other municipalities. I'm waiting for the fellow to call from my peer group, saying, gee, Doug, what are you doing? We can't get there from here. And, because, okay, and what are you doing to get there? And so it, but it's going to be very interesting. The next item is, George, where are we staying on the defibrillator purchase?
I have a little bit of information I can tell you about.
Okay.
I wasn't really totally prepared to speak to that.
No, 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 I do have an idea.
No, it's, it is, it's important to keep it moving. I was hoping that I was going to be able to get some type of a grant, I had contacted a couple of places, like Striker and people like that, that, that I do community service type thing. I essentially struck out, I don't think I'm going to get a grant. The other thing is, as I did more work on this, you get the unit, but you really have to have a compartment for the unit as well, you know what I mean? Like, when you go into these different things like that, you have to have it, it's marked, and there's a key, you know, sometimes there's a key to it, like you see in a lot of the schools, that is not, that, that part of the thing, it's not part of course, so that's going to be an additional cost to that, and you just can't, you know, put it on Val's desk, you know, because, I mean, it's, it's just going to be, you know, it's going to be moved, right? You have to have it in a set area.
You can put it on, everybody knows where it is.
Somebody load a younger leg and push to the victim.
So, that's an additional cost, I'll be getting back to you, but it's good to...
We do, the, we have, we talked about, of course, Roderick.
Right.
And his wife paid.
Paid, yeah, that's right, you know, instead of being, they donated that type of stuff, but I just wanted to let the board know that it was going to be an additional cost.
Okay, good, I mean, we'll stay with it then.
Okay.
Okay, does anybody else have anything else to receive?
Yes.
I see that you have this...
More session.
I, I, I see that, before you go into your executive session, you have the Stellatos on the intended to discuss in executive session, they appeared at the village board, I'm somewhat aware, I have some additional input as to their situation, I was wondering if any of the public that might be watching this meeting on video, if you could, without creating a surface of liability for yourself, explain what that situation is.
Yeah, but before you go, I, I don't even know what this is, I don't, I do not discuss that.
No, none of us do either.
Oh, God, I don't, with all due respect, I don't know who Mr. Stellato are.
We need to, we'll find out tonight.
Is that something you're aware of, Doug?
What is it?
The flooding on Old Minnesota.
Oh, no, 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 that one, that one I can talk to.
Oh, okay.
But that, that's a concerned citizen, so, it's going to the village board, but I want to talk about it here because it has some, a legal liability.
Well, if we do, that's what I'm saying, I, I don't know how we can talk about it until we know more about it.
Okay.
I was just asking if you could explain what the situation is.
Okay.
Without creating any further liability.
Yeah, I'm going to be nervous, yeah. I don't know what you're going to say.
Come on, let me tell you.
Let's talk about some of the conflict, and then come back.
No, 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 no.
Sounds like a wife, you know?
That was approached eventually.
These, these two people, husband and wife, have a property out, and I talked to you about it the other day, out on Minnesota.
Is this the pipe that needs minicing?
I talked to him.
Yeah, is this the pipe that needs minicing?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a pipe underneath Minnesota, run off, they're wet.
And so they're, they're looking, and so there's a conflict, and they're trying to bring the town into it from a legal perspective, they're beaten on the village about it, and so I needed your input, so I thought, well, we can discuss it tonight.
That's no problem.
So I can get back to them and say, here's what we can or cannot do about it.
That's no problem.
That talks all about.
Is that fair enough, Joe? Yeah. Essentially, water is being routed from one side of the town-village line to the other across the road.
That is water, it's contaminated.
And contaminated water as well, because there's a sewer plant adjacent to the catch basin.
Okay, but we know, we can fairness, though, who says it's routed, because that's what's routing, which has existed for a number of years.
Well, according to, to my conversation today with Gail, we've lived there for years, it's not been there.
There's never been a pipe underneath that road.
That's what she says, so, hey.
That's part of, that's part of the discussion, but I, I don't want you guys to get in deeper than you need to.
Right, yeah.
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 I think it's worth a lay out.
It's not far.
It may, well, what I'm looking to is to have some consensus, is this a legal item or not a legal item, I don't know.
Right.
Where am I going to be, so, okay. All right.
Okay.
Would someone like to make?
I mean, George, the other side, the cul-de-sac.
I'll make a motion during the executive session, we discuss the fighter.
No, with intent not to return.
Okay, so I'm okay.
To discuss, I'm going to.
So I just got to leave on that, so you can do it.
Discuss the status of sewer arbitration and negotiating the new AMA, CSDA negotiation status, personnel case PD, Gail and Gary Stellato store order concern, and mislaiming store related claims. Dennis, can you tell me what that is?
Yeah, that's the number of calls I got today.
Okay.
In regards pending claims, which are handled by our insurance carrier and insurance attorneys, but it's also involving more additional work on the part of some of our town officials and filling out reports, and they want advice, and I want to keep your interest pressed.
Okay. Would someone?
Three, personal case, police department, you either must identify the name or you must identify the position. Now, if just personnel is not sufficient, from the succession.
Chief of police.
And that's fine, that's fine, so, so the personnel case we're going to discuss is in regards to chief of police position.
Right.
That's no problem, that's fine, that's acceptable.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Any discussion? All players say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, folks.